...in order. I'll turn my mic on and I'll go and turn my mic on. And just quickly review the agenda. We're going to talk with Rebecca Ryan and Tim Love about our strategic plan process. We're going to talk.
Your mic is down there so they can't hear you.
Okay, is that better? All right. We're going to discuss the Lester Highway Transit Route Extension. We're talking about the solar RFP on public facilities. Going to have a Waste Pro update. Discuss an easement at the Lee Walker Heights property. And then we're going to have a discussion about our guidelines for nonprofit funding. Are there any other items that any commissioners want to discuss at the meeting this afternoon? All right. I need to make an announcement at four o'clock. I'm going to have to briefly step out for just a few minutes to take a call that is scheduled that could not be scheduled any other time and Jasmine will facilitate during that time, but hopefully I'll just be gone for a minute or two. All right, let's get started. So first up, we've got Tim Love with us and we've got Rebecca Ryan on the phone. So, Tim, are you going to kick us off?
Yeah, very briefly.
Okay.
So, thank you. We're doing a web conference today with Rebecca and so I'm going to plug her in and hopefully our technology will comply with this. And Lamar, were you? We just need to...
Maybe I can share this screen with you.
Her voice is lowered since the last time she was with us.
Hey Rebecca, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, that sounds great. I couldn't hear Tim previously.
(inaudible) earlier long night support.
Am I up?
You're up.
All right, awesome. I trust that you got the briefing packet that I sent over the weekend. It looked like this and there are several key discussion items. Commissioner Newman, can you confirm if you can see the slides that I'm showing right now?
Yes, we can.
Yep.
Okay, awesome. So, I'm going to give just a little...[144.72][144.72](beep)
And she's just... She's giving us her best stuff right now and we're not hearing a word of it.
Yes, sir.
All right, I think this is better. We had, I think somebody else was in the meeting as well, so.
Yeah, I've got a colleague who's a really loud talker and I asked him to tone it down, but he's on a meeting too, so I moved to a different room. Hope you can see and hear me with the audio better.
I think so.
Okay. Good enough. All right, so to review where we've been, the last time we were together at our workshop in September, the first thing we did was we processed some additional trends that some of the commissioners had added. And on this slide, you can see how those trends matched up with the four focus areas that we're working on. I also want to make a note that when we go to the public for input and feedback, we will probably not be showing the driving trends on the strategy house, at least not on the first page of it, because we really want to get feedback on the goals, on focus areas, et cetera, and we don't want the driving trends to be a distraction. So, this slide really is kind of for historical reference purposes to show how the trends that are impacting the future of the county drive in to these four focus areas. Then at our last meeting, we identified these wildly important goals and the core question was, all right, if every department currently in Buncombe County operated at current levels, what's one area where change would have the greatest impact? And you generated a whole bunch of WIGs that were written in this way. They started with a verb. We were trying to move from X to Y, measuring based on outputs. We wanted these to be simple so that they could be easily understood and things that we could match up current and future investments and results. And then we reminded everybody to focus on what, not on how, but on what. So, the WIG tallies that we ended up with, I need to just do a quick stop share and find this other document. The WIG tallies that we ended up with totaled 15 and these... Let me do a screen share again here. You've got these, these were the second page of your handout. And the first thing I wanted to be able to visit with you about today is this is a potential clarification, a pretty significant miss... possible misunderstanding. So, I'm now showing you the, you know, the WIGs in the four focus areas. And when we tallied up the votes, and you'll remember commissioners had yes votes and no votes, and staff, department leaders, had yes votes and no votes. And under vibrant economy, the current winner is to increase median income, to increase the median income in Buncombe County. But, there may have been a significant misunderstanding. If you look at the second one, under vibrant economy, increased sales tax 5% year-over-year, it had 11 staff no votes. And in talking with Commissioner Belcher, we think there may have been a misunderstanding. The intention of the WIG was to increase sales tax receipts, income, by 5% year-over-year.
Revenue.
Not that... Right, revenue. Not that the commission would, you know, pass a law requiring additional sales tax. So, this feels like a significant misunderstanding and if that is the case, that the staff misinterpreted it, or even the commissioners misinterpreted it, we may want to go back and do another poll. Thoughts on that?
Well, you know, you and I had a discussion about that and at our table, it was very clear that what we were using this as a measure of increased spending in the county. And that increased spending is a direct indicator of a improving economy. You could use the word strong economy, you could use a lot of different terms, but by any metrics of any economist, it is clearly an indicator of growth. And I think that when I talked to you, that you, as you said, you thought that maybe the staff thought that we would be raising sales tax. And that's clearly not what it was. So, and I think got a nod from the chairman, probably get a nod from everybody else.
Did any of the commissioners, yeah, just to kind of clarify, I mean, that's the way I...
Yeah.
The way Commissioner Belcher just described it was the way I thought of it. Is that... Are we all in agreement about, is this about the economic growth?
Yes.
Not increasing the tax rate on sales, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, Rebecca, I think we're all on the same page in terms of that's what the... I think that's the way we were hearing it. So, if it needs to be clarified further, I think we're all on the same page about that's... It's not about raising the tax rate on sales taxes.
Okay, sounds good. All right, very good. So, we will go back to staff and clarify that. And, you know, so that you know, when you look at the... This could change which WIG shows up in vibrant economy because of that huge number of no votes in the staff area. So, I'll report back as soon as we know more. But we do want to get this nailed down because we're planning on going to the public in the very near future for feedback on the wildly important goals.
Yeah, and you...
So...
We also talked a little bit about the, you know, you know, the challenge of median income, but there is challenge in that measurement. That doesn't necessarily mean everybody's doing well.
Right, exactly. You know, we... Median is definitely a better metric than mean. You know, mean is just the gross average. Median throws out the top, throws out the bottom and, you know, counts it into the very center. So, that is a better metric. But, again, we'll sort of see where the staff ends up on that. All right, so coming back then to... Sorry, my deck started over at the top. Let me get to your next slide here. So, with that in mind, all of you with whom I met last week, we talked about the new 2025 goals, were the top rated WIGs. And highlighted in red here were the parts of the WIGs that were the from X to Y, you know, where we really started to think about what data points we would like to see measured over the next five years. So, as you can see, not all of these have been completely sussed out. You know, there are questions, for example, about, you know, what our starting point is and what our endpoint should be in five years, and we want to do that in a careful way. But all of the commissioners so far have agreed that when we go to the public, we're going to leave out the red, the red fonted areas from the 2025 goals because putting data in or having lack of data in some of these goal areas could be... Could sort of side rail conversations. People saying, oh, that's not the right goal. And what we really want is people's input on what the goals can be and what they should be. So, today, we've already talked about clarifying the increase in sales tax. I also want to talk about adding some WIGs from current commissioner priorities.
Rebecca, Rebecca, I apologize.
Yes.
Can you back up a slide, please?
Yes, sir.
Might just give a minute on some of the verbiage in the WIGs, goals, might not necessarily be where we end up. For example, in the bottom left where it says maintain acreage of farm and undeveloped lands, I think most or all of the commissioners are concerned, I certainly am, about the amount of farmland that we have in Buncombe County and looking at ways that we can preserve that, you know, and still, you know, allow the growth that's necessary in Buncombe County. And the way that's written, it's kind of written like it would have to be exactly where it's at right now. And so, you know, you might give, you know, 30 seconds on the verbiage of some of those and it's that... It's kind of a living document to an extent, right?
That's a really excellent point and we're going to talk about this again a bit later. But, the idea here is, the commissioners have captured the spirit, I think, of what these WIGs can be. Now, the question is how we refine them. Some of that is on you as the commission, some of it is on staff to do a good job researching what, you know, what the X to Y is and what it could be. And some of it is on the community, right? So, one of the things that Commissioner Belcher and I talked about, and I think has been built into the engagement plan, is making sure, for example, that we have farmers and people who work in ag, help us get that wording right. So, yeah, it's a good point. It's a living document at this point.
Thanks.
You bet, absolutely. So, at this point, I want to talk a little bit about how we sort of dock our current WIGs with other priorities that the commission has already identified. So, on this house, I just used one example. So, under the focus area of educated and capable community, in the dark blue boxes with the white font under the 2025 goals, you can see the two WIGs that emerged from our September workshop. Increase access for elderly to programs and services like mountain mobility and assure all children have literacy skills they need. The early childhood fund has put an even finer point on that second WIG, right? To increase third grade literacy rates. So, I wonder how you, as commissioners, feel about some of the larger and more prioritized investments you've made and how we might dock those in here. One option would be sort of what I've just done, which is use a different color to indicate the things that are already being worked on by 2025. For example, I believe there's another goal around reducing the jail population and we could dock that under resident well-being. That would do two things. One, it would show the public that the previous strategic priorities didn't just get thrown up in the air, but that they're reflected in these four focus areas. And it would allow... So, that would allow some continuity, but it also gives some validation for the things that you're already working on and how they drive up into these focus areas. I'm not attached to this at all, but several of the commissioners in our one-on-ones asked about this, wondered about it, and wanted to have some more reflection, like, are these the right WIGs? So, I'll leave it to you.
Rebecca, just thanks for that. And this is something I'm very interested in looking at and kind of working together here and then with staff and certainly at the community level. Not just for the reasons you named, but even more foundationally because I think the work we have underway in areas like early childhood, affordable housing, criminal justice, and response to opioid are in fact responding to trends playing out right now and do in fact reflect pretty significant stakeholder engagement processes in each case. And we didn't go about it quite this way, but we got there sort of a different way. So, to me, it would feel like an exciting and very natural, not just natural, but really critical step in the process to kind of do that docking. And it feels also excitingly, like each of the areas we're doing that really focused work on certainly includes sustainability and their renewable energy fits very naturally under the focus areas we've built into this house, so to speak. So, I'm really excited about having that conversation and to me, that feels like a both a more... It feels like a really robust sort of picture, or more than picture, set of ideas to bring out into the community engagement sessions.
So, Rebecca, to me, you know, what I like about, you know, the... What I like about the process is the WIG, X to Y by when. As you know, the X to Y by when puts accountability in whatever these goals end up being. You know, our heart may tell us that we want to... We want to take care of, you know, the kids, we want to take care of the elderly, we want to do these things. And of course, we do want to do this, but we're accountable to the taxpayers to make sure that these are done in a practical and a responsible manner. And so, when you do from X to Y and then you put the when on it, there's accountability there. And so, you know, I'm very interested in that piece because then this just becomes more of a strat... More than a strategy session, actually becomes, you know, strategic planning with clear metrics and measurements and accountability in it. Your thoughts?
I agree with you and one of the... As I've been looking at some of the strategic priorities, for example, one of the concerns I have, I'm not concerned about the strategic priorities, but the WIG formula is really about outputs, right? So, whatever we pull forward as a wildly important goal, as you've said, from X to Y, those are the outputs. By 2025, in our case, working on a five-year strategic plan, that's what we, I think we'd really have to zero in on if in fact we do want to dock some of these things together. And that requires, you know, a conversation because something, for example, increasing, like slots in early childhood, or just building more affordable housing, that's an input, not an output. So, we would just want to be really thoughtful about how to think about the outputs, not just the inputs, but the outputs.
So, do you foresee, just, you know, like the Franklin Covey model, do you foresee specific dashboards for each of these WIGs?
That is where this should go. I mean, I see these WIGs as being something that not only help guide investment decisions, but that you want to be able to measure against, you know, down the road.
Okay, thanks. All right, what else? What's next, Rebecca? Or what's... Yeah. What else do you want to cover today?
I guess, yeah, I guess what I'd like to know is if there's a general consensus around wanting to dock some of the other current initiatives happening, trying to find the WIGs in there that we feel could be measured between 2020 and 2025 or not, because this will require some effort before we go out to the public.
Yeah, I certainly agree, you know. Anybody disagree that we want to take some of the existing priorities and fold them into this? I don't see anybody disagreeing with that, so.
No, I've got one last comment. I guess I drank too much caffeine today or something, Rebecca, I'm sorry, but, you know, I just want to make sure that the... That when we end up on our WIGs, that they're specifically, you know, they're bunk... They're very clearly tailored to the entirety of Buncombe County. And that they don't... They don't look like... Though they could have some components of, you know, for example, the Chamber, the Five by Five, or, you know, or Ashful's, you know, priorities. They could have some components of it, that it's just... I really hope that when people look at it, they can clearly just say, yes. That is clearly for the entirety of Buncombe County. And that's kind of where my mind and my heart is on the whole thing, so.
Yeah. I appreciate that. And the reference on this particular slide to ABL Five by Five will be removed when it goes to the public. This is just an error on my part. I've been chugging so darn many of these versions of this that I missed it on this one. But, yeah, that for sure will be taken out and I appreciate your comment about this being an inclusive process. Okay, a couple of other things, maybe pretty quickly. We talked about docking the two things together and what's possibly missing. A couple of small refinements. Environmental stewardship, the recommendation was, since one of the WIGs is about greenhouse gases, to change the heading to environmental and energy stewardship. Commissioner Belcher already mentioned that we need some help getting the words right for maintain acreage of farmland. And I've talked with the staff and we know that they have been built into the engagement process. And then, the final question is around increasing public trust. One of the commissioners in our conversation said, you know, is this really something that we can control? You know, yes, we can control resident engagement, but the question was if that WIG was more of a reflex to the lack of public trust from the fraud and the scandal. And so, in good faith, I wanted to bring this to the commissioners as well.
Yeah, you know, I think that's a great point, Rebecca. The... I still, you know, I... I mean, increasing public trust would be an outcome of doing things the right way, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, I think that we should... I mean, I'm not against having something that's sort of explicitly talking about, you know, something in, you know, about this issue, but in a way, just kind of saying increase public trust, doesn't feel quite right to me. To me, it seems more about wanting to create, you know, an organization that runs based on the highest ethical, you know, standards that we can. And if we do that, I think we'll earn trust, right? So, to me, it's sort of about creating a culture of, you know, working based on the highest ethical principles. I'm just kind of thinking off the top of my head, but it's sort of more about that and then I think the trust comes. But, what are other commissioners' thoughts on this?
I think this is one area where I go along with what we have increased the public trust because, folks, we got to remember, look at where we've come from and what we're still going through. And we've got to let the public know that we are serious about regaining the public trust. And when you look at the next five-year plan, it'll probably take us that long to completely get it back. But I do think we can't ignore that and we need to... I think it needs to stay in there.
I agree with Commissioner Whitesides. I think it needs to stay in there in some form or fashion. I'm not sure this is the right place for it because it... How do we measure it? I do think it needs to be in there and I think if we're following the plan and meeting our outcomes and showing real results, it does start to build public trust. We give residents access to services, you know, accessible, transparent dashboards. A lot of that starts to come, but we can't measure it.
So, let me just kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Edwards said there. At the end, my concern with this has been the measurement part of it, but maybe it's possible... Maybe it's possible, Rebecca, when in the sustainability plan, when there's discussion about the measurement and dashboards and the transparency associated with those dashboards, that maybe that's where, you know, we explain the purpose of that measurement and that transparency, that it is to increase public trust. In order for it to be a true WIG, it has to be X to Y by when, and that's kind of what makes it a little bit, a little bit, you know, crazy. But certainly, everybody agrees that our ultimate goal is to do that. I mean, that's what we want to be able to do. Maybe that's not a bad spot to kind of bring that out in the plan.
Do you have any?
Oh, we've been talking about public trust for two years now and it's got to be reworded some other way, I think. You earn the trust instead of telling them that, "Trust me."
Yeah, we're the government, we're here to help.
So, figure it out.
Yeah, I kind of... I land similar to where Robert and Brownie are in terms of feeling like maybe there's some work to do on the wordsmithing of this. I can't come up with it in this moment, but it... I'm glad we're spending some time on this because it does feel like we're not quite capturing. And I think I... I mean, I think I sort of echo what I heard Brownie saying in terms of, I think, good ethical, transparent governance and county services that deliver are, you know, what we need to do and those are the things that will build trust over time. And we'll do other things over time, not just build trust, serve people in other ways, so.
So, it sounds like everyone wants... Once we want to have something that's talking about public trust and how we earn it, but we... Sounds like there's also interest in just kind of, yeah, how do we measure it and what's the right headline on this?
One thing, no, let's not lose track of, we got to remember, we are doing this for the average citizen. And let's make sure that they understand what we're doing and it's something that we don't. You know, we understand and let's not take it for granted that they'll understand.
That's what I'll say.
Yeah. Okay, well, you've given me direction on this and we'll take it back and work something through before we... And you'll have an opportunity to see it before we go to the public.
Good.
But it sounds like the... It's critical and everything should... This is a normal outcome of just doing great work, but maybe where it's placed or how it's ordered should change. So, I'll put that on my list.
Great.
So, just the final confirmation is, when these WIGs go out to the public, as I mentioned, they will not have, when they go to the public, they will not have from X to Y by when because we don't want that to be a distraction.
Good.
But we do want to ask the public, what does success look like in this WIG? You know, if they have suggestions on, you know, what the data should be or how to reword it, for example, with respect to the one that Commissioner Belcher was talking about earlier, you know, preservation of farmland. So, I need confirmation on that from you guys so that we can go and finish this next phase of work.
Rebecca, this is Jasmine. If we could actually just rewind for one sec, I had one more question I just wanted to sort of put on the table before we go into the final questions.
Yes.
Which was, I... So, this is... I'm really glad we're having this conversation and it's really the first time as a commission we're getting to discuss kind of the tallies that happened through the exercise and really appreciated what that exercise did. But for peace of mind, I would find it helpful if we sort of did one more pass of the WIGs that were created through that workshop and just to see, do these all really feel like the WIGs we want to be elevating as our top priorities in the next five years, assuming they will be supplemented by WIGs reflecting our current strategic priorities where we have the most momentum? And I think in... Just to start... the exercise, and really appreciated what that exercise did. But for peace, peace of mind, I would find it helpful if we sort of did one more pass of the wigs that were created through that workshop, and just to see, do these all really feel like the prior, the wigs we want to be elevating as our top priorities in the next five years, assuming they will be supplemented by wigs reflecting our current strategic priorities where we have the most momentum? And I think, just to start with where I, where I land is, to me, all of these feel like really important things that we could focus on. And I'm not sure that if the, if the question we were asking is, putting aside for a sec the strategic priorities, which I know will be addressed, I'm not sure if the question we were asking is, what are the other things we should definitively include in the next five years? I'm, I'm not sure in a few of these cases that this is where I personally would land. I'm just one voice among many, but it was, but I, I kept kind of coming back and having that gut check, like, and so I just wanted to sort of ask folks where they were in that process. And, and obviously, you know, is there anything that, that feels like it's absolutely missing that also wouldn't be captured by the strategic priority work we've been doing? Or is there anything here that feels like, yes, that's good and important and a basic function of county service, but in the next five years, this isn't one of the sort of guide stars we want to elevate? And maybe the answer's no, but just for due diligence, wanted to go through one more, one more process of asking that.
So let, let me, are you concerned, just have a, a brief question, then I got a comment. Are you, are you concerned that, that you're, you're missing something, or something is missing? I mean, that's what I'm feeling from you.
Well, like, so specifically, when I read increase access for elderly to programs and services like mountain mobility, that's really important. I just wonder if there's a wig that might be more salient for elderly community, like decrease rates of certain conditions among elderly community, or if there's something that, that, which we would do by increasing access to these programs, but there's actually a more salient sort of precise piece in that one. So that's one I keep coming back to, is it feels like this, of course, we want to do something around serving our elderly community members, but I'm not sure that just increasing access to the programs quite nails on the head, quite hits the nail on the head of what that is.
Okay, so, so here's, here's my comment, and I, and I don't, as Commissioner Whiteside said, I, I don't want us to be, you know, talking way over the head of, I mean, we got, we got to drill this down to where, where the average person who's not been through Franklin Covey or whatever, you know, can understand it. But could you speak just a moment to lead measures and lag measures, and are you going to be using those? Because some of the things that Commissioner Farrar is talking about will, will probably show up as measurements. Am I way off base on that, or not?
Yeah, you are, and we haven't, we haven't even entered, you know, into that zone yet. I, I'm sorry to turn this back on you, but Commissioner Belcher, do you want to talk a little bit about how Franklin Covey does lead versus lag measures, so that folks can get a, of how we will look at progress moving forward?
I mean, I don't, I don't want to get into a long conversation of it, but it's, it's, it's basically, you know, part of, some of the things that we're concerned about, I'm, I'm thinking are going to come up in the measurements and be part of, of how we achieve that wig, and those things that we're looking at. So in layman's terms, I mean, that's, that's pretty much the way I understand, you know, those measures. Is that close? I've slept since I've done some of this, so.
I know, that's not true. The idea is that you want to, you know, put, put your, put your investments in the lead measures, right? So, and then the lag will tell you if it worked or if it didn't. So we're not quite there yet, because the, the wigs focus on from X to Y by when, and then we've got to start drilling into that and saying, and what are the things that are going to tell us if we're going to get there, right? So it's, it's a little more than I had scheduled or planned for, for today. I'm trying to think about how I can be the most, the most useful.
What I would think, just, just, just answer, or, you know, Commissioner Farrar's concern, which I, I mean, I, I was thinking some of the measures would probably do that, because we can, we can drill these wigs to death. To me, it seems if we can just get the language on them, you know, to where we're comfortable with them, then we're probably really pretty close.
You know, that would, that's a, it's interesting, too, because I think the other thing that that solves for is some of the previous strategic priorities, I think there is, there is language in some of those things around some of the leading measures that produce the lagging outcome. And so it might be, again, kind of under that notion of docking the two things together, I think it's, I can, I can work directly with you, Commissioner Beachfarr, because I think it's going to help solve both two issues, talking more about this.
Maybe what I'm saying, and anyone else can jump in, is as simple as, is maybe there's a little bit more, I would think there's maybe, we could do a little more work on the elderly wig, the ig serving elderly folks, in the same way we will around the public trust one.
Yeah, and the farmland, I mean.
And the farmland one. So maybe that's, maybe what I'm saying is as simple as that, but also wanting to hear if there's anyone else on commission who has anything else where they, they want to kind of raise a flag before we move to the next step in the process.
I think, I think each of the, I think each of the goals needs more discussion in terms of exactly what we're saying, right? I mean, especially if these are just these headlines, and we want to make sure that they're capturing as well as you possibly can when you're summarizing some big complicated issue into like a, something that's not a whole lot more than a bumper sticker. So let's at least make sure we got the bumper stickers like as good as they can be. And I think each of these probably warrants that some more. I mean, just as an example, I mean, I've got, you know, opinions about the greenhouse gas one, I'm glad we have one, but I don't think that's the exact right language. And, and the, you know, expand and maintain cultural and recreational assets. So that's, that's pretty broad, right? Like, I'm not really sure what that even means. Like, if I just said that, I don't think most people would know, like, oh, they're going to do these kinds of things. It's just so, I think each one of these wig, you know, kind of goals probably needs, it's a little bit worth thought about, what are we really trying to say with, with this point? But I think the topics are good. I just think it's kind of about, you know, again, sussing out the language to make sure it's, it's the best we can, we can do.
Well, they're not wigs yet, and part of that is getting, getting the specific language right. And to the chairman's point, and I think I've mentioned this before, I don't want these to be national headlines, or, or national buzzwords, or whatever. These need to be Buncombe County clearly defined, wildly important goals that we care deeply about, that are measurable. There you go.
And as clear as we can.
As clear, that's right.
All right. All right. Rebecca, any other, any other, any other feedback you need from us today?
No, I think the, you know, Saturday is our first engagement process, and, you know, we're going to be hustling to take the recommendations that you've suggested to us and get sign off one more time, like, these are the wigs that we're going to go to the public with. And I guess what I would just ask is, if we're in the ballpark, if we're in the spirit of what we talked about in September, to just give us a little bit of leniency, because the engagement process is going to also, you know, be another whole source of data and input, so that when we come back together in November, we're going to have a much cleaner and more organic representation of, of these wigs. That's what I would ask.
Yeah, so I think, I think, I think it sounds good, and I think, you know, so it just should obviously be emphasized to the public, that the public understands this is very much a work in progress. And so, so we expect to talk further about the language, and I think we've got the right, a lot of the right topics on the table. It's really just kind of, again, the nuance is exactly how we want to talk them, and what exact benchmarks we're trying to set. So, any other comments from commissioners? All right, Rebecca, thanks for your help on this, and we look forward to.
Thanks, everybody.
To working with you to move this forward. All right, take care.
Same here. Take care. Bye-bye.
All right.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.
Oh, hey.
Okay. Next up, I believe we have Matt Cable here. Hi, Matt. And come on over and talk to us about the Art Leicester Highway Transit Route Expansion.
Sure. And Max is pulling up, there it is, a presentation for you. So the item before you is information about the Art Leicester Highway Transit Extension, as you've mentioned. If you recall, back in December of 2018, I came before the board and gave a presentation just informing the board about the city's recently adopted Transit Master Plan. And this Transit Master Plan is intended to be a guide for the city of Asheville as it looks to shape and define where bus service will be going in the future. That plan was adopted in July of 2018. As I mentioned, I came before you in December, just to give you an update and information generally about what that plan contained, and some of how it would impact and interact with services that we provide in terms of public transit. The implementation of this plan, according to the city staff, is to begin January 5th of 2020. So they're actually going to begin implementing aspects of this plan on that date. And so part of that implementation included an item which we did present information on generally in December, but it included an expansion of an existing route and service further out Leicester Highway. And so, the city has formally communicated a request for some funding support from Buncombe County, with the purpose being to extend the existing W four route, which is going to be part of a combined west-east one route that would go beyond the city limit. So these will be miles operating outside of the city's jurisdiction. This was based on a recommendation from the Transit Master Plan. The request for funding would support service that would start on January 5th, as I mentioned. It would be a two-mile extension of the existing route service. There would be four additional signed stops. The operating hours are, are listed there. They vary Monday through Saturday versus Sunday service, which is more constrained and limited. And according to the master plan, that particular loop, that extension of one mile, would serve an additional 690 residents, and is estimated to serve 190 different employment opportunities or jobs along that corridor. This is a map from the actual master plan, which shows the general location of the routing. The current route ends just prior to Leicester Highway's intersection with Old County Home Road, and the extension will be adding a loop along Old County Home Road, and then coming back onto Leicester Highway. So you can see the route there. For more reference.
So let, let me comment on that route. One, can you go back, you know, knowing that area out there, that is a great route for this, that is a very impactful one mile that we're doing, so.
And they have proposed four stops. So the city's fixed route service does stop at designated locations, so I wanted to point out where those would be. But also, just to give you a perspective of some of the locations surrounding that route, that might be of interest or points of, of kind of locating where, where the route extension was proposed. There would be a stop at the base of the entrance of Irwin Middle School. And then also, there's an elderly apartment complex, Villas at Fallen Spruce. There's an additional apartment complex further out Leicester Highway. So this gives you kind of an idea of where those locations are. And you can see clearly that all of the route extension is outside of the city's limits. And for further perspective, so the orange mapping here would be kind of what one might anticipate a citizen would utilize to walk, maybe to access these points. This is just conjecturing, how that might actually work. The issue that you'll see in this area, one, this is a kind of a distance of those mapped routes, so you can get an idea about how far away a citizen would travel. One is that there is a lack of pedestrian infrastructure, so there aren't sidewalks. You're not going to find a lot of crosswalks in that area. So we imagine people will be using other means, not necessarily traveling along the road corridors to get where they can get. But this gives you an idea of the general distance from the proposed stops to some of those locations, based on what would seem to be a reasonable route to use. In a traditional fixed route service, industry standards and kind of operating knowledge indicates that most people are willing to travel about a quarter mile on a regular basis to access transit, that's a pretty standard distance, up to a half a mile. And so you can see that the middle school and high school are definitely within that quarter to half a mile range, as are the Villas at Fallen Spruce and the Carmel Ridge Apartments. So that's giving you some perspective on distance there from the existing stops. Some of the other locations are kind of on that upper end, West Buncombe Elementary, Eblin Intermediate School, and the Williams Baldwin Teacher Campus. So they're on that upper end of what might be a reasonable travel time, but with access to transit, you can't always rule that out necessarily. But again, wanted to go, give you kind of an idea of where the, where the routing is located, what's approximate to it, and general distances from those locations to the proposed stops. So the city did provide information on their funding request. So basically, what they are asking for is funding support for the period from January 5th, 2020, through June 30, 2020. So it's that six-month operating window. And here, it is the number of trips the, the vehicle itself would make, not the number of people riding, but the trips that the vehicle would make, the time that it takes that vehicle to perform the service, because all of their costs are driven by vehicle revenue hour. So it's all based on the time the vehicle's in operation, and then the rate that they're currently paying the operating contractor. And so that's how they arrived at the, the request of 28,934. I would point out that that's the 2020 request, so it's that six-month period again. They did include in that information what they anticipated a future year request would be. It would be around $61,000 to $62,000 for fiscal year 2021. So if the county were to support this with funding, and then wish to continue to supporting, support that route with funding, it would be at an increased cost, because you're operating in a full year. The annual cost would increase annually, so you would imagine that each year that cost would increase. And that any kind of infrastructure beyond a route stop sign, so this is the transit stop, there's a sign saying this is an art stop, would be at an additional cost, and they would be requesting support for that if that were warranted, should the county have interest in supporting that expansion.
So that's about a two and a half percent increase over next year.
Right, and so in that, that next fiscal year, and we have a complex relationship, we've talked about that before, where we provide ADA complimentary pair transit, so they would be evaluating that. The city pays us for that service, but they would also then assume some sort of increased cost for that provision of service, that they would now be in an expanded area. So it gets a little bit more complicated in a future fiscal year, but it would be at minimum twice what you're looking at in this year, plus an increase based on their operating contract and possible ADA pair transit costs. And so the intention at this point would be to bring back this item to the board for formal consideration at a future meeting. There are funding options, if there is interest in pursuing this and providing the funding support, including rescinding some grant funds. So we have access to certain grant funds that we could rescind that access to the city, to where there wouldn't actually have to be transfer of funds between the two governments. The other thing that I think is important to point out is that there would be opportunities for monitoring of how this is performing, including ridership volumes, on-time performance, that's often a concern about how riots are performing. And this is part of a bigger systematic change for the city, so their goal is to improve their services at that January 5th date by doing a, a number of things. But again, part of that was the opportunity for this expansion if, if the county had interest in funding support.
Matt, a question I have, I think this is great, the route, but when did you know you would need this 28,000?
So the city, they included in their plan that this was an option. And so, in September, they began formalizing the date at which they would begin implementing and communicating to staff kind of preliminarily, hey, we'd like to do this expansion, we would want to do this January 5th, if the county has interest. And at that point, our response was, when would you need to have information from the county about our interest in doing that to allow that to roll out on January 5th? Because obviously, it's an operational change, so they are going to have to have some advance notice. But the, the turnaround has been fairly quickly, and part of that's because they're looking at, from their side, all of the budgetary costs that they're going to incur, and trying to, to assess all of that for a January 5th implementation.
Well, the reason I said that, it would have been helpful if we'd known this at budget time. Now, for next year, it's fine, you know, we know in plenty of time. But this is like affordable housing and some other things. Sometimes it seems like that we are the last minute, they remember, oh, we can go to the county for funds. That's all I'm pointing out, just give us a heads up, so that we can include this in the budget and handle it the way we should, you know, handle it. But I'm all for it. I think it's needed, it's past due. But I just think that we need to be aware of that. We have the budget constraints, just like the city, and, you know, we'd like to take that in consideration.
Commissioner, thank you for that point. I, I do agree that this is off-cycle fund budget, but I do want Matt to expand a little bit about the funding options that we have. This would not be coming from general fund. This would not be asking the county to, to appropriate more funds from general fund. There's a grant conversation that he mentioned briefly, and if you can just take two more minutes to just talk about the fact that this is not There's a grant conversation that he mentioned briefly. And if you can just take two more minutes to just talk about the fact that this is not general fund money, so we're not going back to the county's tax.
Okay. Yeah, the other thing, I want to make a point because I'm a little, little confused. We have had this presentation before because I remembered this amount. And I actually thought we, I thought it was, you know, was in the budget. But it, but it wasn't.
Well, it's-
So the question did come up.
Had discussion about it.
Yes. The question did come up and we did know that there's a master plan coming forward.
Yeah, we knew that.
But we did not put the actual cash in fund balance because we know that there was grant funds available. We do have funds available in the county's budget if we needed to do this. But because there's grant funds available, we thought that was a better route instead of using the tax dollars from the county. So.
Okay, all for that.
May I speak?
Yeah.
In this first leg of the twenty-eight thousand dollars, we need to know what the ridership is. I don't care what the numbers are. I want to know how many people ride the bus, you know. I live, put, put back up on the screen where you go up to Lata Home. Bring it all, all the way back down to Lata Home. Okay. Where it goes up the hill at Lata Home, I used to live in a house across the street. All the houses from there, all the way to the, basically the school now are businesses. They're not homes any longer. So it, it could be a benefit, but first you have to understand what the ridership is before you waste the money. You can put out six hundred thousand or a hundred thousand or whatever you're talking about. That's just a number. The people get on that bus is the real count. So, you know, the budget in the city on their bus deal from Lonnie Blair ran it about six years ago was twenty-eight million a year. Now it's at fifty-eight million a year. So they're not doing a very good job. If you go to Oakley, there's a road that they took a bus off of. And now the old people that's on that road have to walk to Fairview Road to be able to catch the bus. So they're not doing a very good job and standing here asking us for this money. I understand some of that because I was over there before I ever come over here. And, you know, I want numbers of people that ride the buses in the first twenty-eight thousand. If it's not that many people, then we don't need to be paying twelve dollars a person to ride a bus. Thank you.
Matt, just to chime in, I want to say thank you for this presentation. And this feels like a great action step, following up on several years of conversation, both with you and getting updates from the city's master transit planning process about really how the county can be strategically partnering with the city to expand services to exactly those, exactly those places where we know data shows us there's demand and need. This is an issue I hear about really frequently from folks in, across the county, honestly. As we see more and more folks living, moving to places outside the bus lines but needing access to public transportation. So I, I'm very excited to see us talking about this today, look forward to the vote on November 5th, and hope this will be the first of other opportunities we'll have to make targeted strategic investments in ways to expand access to public transit. So I just want to say thank you for the, the work in this. I know that this is an outgrowth of a lot of work you and others put in to make sure the county was part of a master transit planning process and think about how we can build those bridges more effectively. So thanks.
And just to revisit the funding, I didn't want to leave that behind. So the county does have access to fifty-three oh seven funds. Those are federal dollars that flow through the city of Asheville. In that relationship, we're a subrecipient of the funding. So we receive it under the city's programming. And so we do have the opportunity and that agreement for the funding and how that flows allows us the opportunity to rescind funds. And by that I mean, instead of exchanging a dollar for dollar for services that we might offer each other, you can actually rescind grant funding. So if you, an example would be if you had access to two hundred thousand dollars, you could say, we want to retain access to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for use for programs we are going to operate, but rescind thirty thousand dollars to the city to operate X and Y. And so you would spell out specifically what that rescension is for and document it and retain access to the other grant funds. And so that's a process that we can use to, one, provide those kind of operations if that's the desire. But two, to prevent the exchange of funding unnecessarily between agencies and the, outside of that workflow. But again, all those decisions would be coming before the board, especially for an expansion of an operation using that kind of a tool or mechanism. So it's not necessarily looking for grant, for general fund dollars, but exchanging or allowing the city to use grant funds that we would have had first, first bite at for our purposes.
But if we're going to use that tool to rescind whatever amount that would be, it would be clear, it would be voted on in here, and it would be very clearly documented where that money and that, that purpose would benefit that Buncombe County. If, for, for our discussion, what we're talking about is, is, is rescinding money to the city based on a grant that we would receive that would, that money would benefit outside of the city limits. Is that, is that what, right?
Correct. And then, and the other piece, speaking to that, and it's something that staff, I think, would want to reiterate here, is that we are aware that it would be important for us to understand how these stops are performing, what the ridership of the overall route looks like, how our stops perform, the, you know, the stops that we're supporting with funding would perform compared to other stops. And we would specify with the rescension to the city that we would want monthly reporting from them on ridership trends at the stops for the whole route, on their performance statistics, because they're monitoring their contractor, as we would, to ensure that they're getting the best possible service delivery. But as you mentioned, if the, if the routes aren't performing, if the stops aren't generating ridership, is the investment something that you'd want to continue? So we would be monitoring that and bringing that, of course, back in any future cycle or consideration.
All right. Thanks so much, Matt. Look forward to taking this up at the next commission meeting for, for decision. All right. Commissioners, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I've got to step out to take a brief phone call, so I apologize for that. I'll be back in just a moment. But next up is, we're going to have a discussion of the solar on public facilities, RFP, and Jeremiah LaRoy will be walking us through that. As with the last item, there's no action being taken on this today, but it's just a preview of what we'll be discussing at our November meeting. All right.
Good afternoon. Max has a presentation ready for you. Okay. As Commissioner Newman mentioned, we're here to just talk about solar on public facilities. We're not requesting any action today, just an update of where we are and what we anticipate seeing here in the next few months. So just some quick background. Obviously, commission knows we have a hundred percent renewable energy goal for county operations by 2030 and for the broader community by 2042. And that the renewable roadmap planning process that we went through recommended aggregated solar as a means of helping to achieve that goal. So the county's looking to collaborate with local public organizations, city, county, AB Tech, school systems, et cetera. Just some very brief updates on progress in terms of energy efficiency. We've done one point two million kilowatt hours of energy efficiency projects, saving the county about forty-five thousand dollars a year. We've got some ongoing LED upgrades and of course, the five-megawatt solar farm at the retired landfill. I gave you guys a brief update on that last time, but Commissioner White said had a specific question about when construction was expected. And right now that timeline is right around Q three of 2020 for the construction for that to start. And of course, what we're here to talk about today is future projects. Solar on county facilities identified approximately one point two megawatts worth of projects. And the combined effort of those projects with the solar farm would represent approximately twenty-five percent of the county's internal goal, just as a frame of reference. So step one, analyze the facilities. County has over eighty-three buildings, so we went through every single one of them. And we worked with facilities and maintenance. We worked with city and county staff, looking at some basic key indicators for what, what makes the most sense when you're talking about solar. What type of roof is it? How old is it? What condition is it in? Does it still have a warranty? Is there shading? What's the orientation of the building? What's the building's energy intensity? Interconnection challenges, you know, infrastructure, that sort of thing. Sort of funneling these buildings through this lens so that we can narrow these things down. Looking at structural engineering, it's something that has to happen when you're going to put solar on a roof anyway. You have to get a stamp from a structural engineer saying it could handle that extra load. And once it's sort of passed through all of these things, we look at the actual preliminary design of the solar. What would it look like? How big would it be? What would those energy impacts be? And then, of course, once we know about that system size, we can look at the financial impact. We can give some, some pretty basic budget estimates. And then, once we have the budget, we can estimate a return on that investment. So just a quick update on the partner sites. City of Asheville has also completed this analysis. They've got about ten sites with about the same capacity. AB Tech has requested analysis of three of their sites. They're only looking at parking lot canopies. I actually included a picture of one in case folks didn't know what that meant. It's not something we see a lot in this area, but it's, it's canopy systems you park underneath, about one megawatt of capacity. But there's potential for other systems at AB Tech. We're talking to them about those as well. So the results of our analysis internally for the county came up with the, out of our eighty-three buildings. These were the fourteen sites that were identified as the most viable to put solar on. Several libraries, a couple of canopy systems at potentially the, the parking decks to look at. The only thing I would point to in this is that number five and number six, the College Street Parking Deck and thirty-five Woodfin, the Stanley Center next door here, we would not be actually putting solar on the roof of the Stanley Center. We would be potentially building a canopy system on the deck and then tying it to the meter at the Stanley Center to offset that electrical load there. The parking deck doesn't use a lot of electricity. The Stanley Center does. So it would make a lot more sense to do it that way, if, if we were to move forward with that project. Preliminary budgets. These are in order from least expensive to most expensive. Obviously, it totals about two point nine million dollars for all of these projects combined. System size again was about one point two megawatts. I know that's a kind of a busy slide, but if you have any questions, please let me know. Levelized cost of energy. This is a concept I just wanted to introduce very briefly because it's, it's one that we use a lot when we're talking about energy-producing systems. So it's, we typically look at things like simple payback when it comes to energy projects. It costs a thousand dollars. It saves you a hundred dollars. It pays for itself in ten years and it's, it's a simple way to look at it. When you're talking about solar, energy costs that you pay to Duke Energy don't tend to go down over time. They tend to increase. And so this, this is a way of looking at energy in terms of the long-term lifespan of, of an energy-producing system. So it includes capital that it takes to build it, as well as the operation and maintenance of that system over its lifetime. So the levelized cost of energy for these combined projects averages about five cents a kilowatt hour. To give you some frame of reference there, we currently pay on average about nine cents a kilowatt hour. It's at Duke. So there is obviously, over the long term, a significant gap. And we did use a cost escalator over the lifespan of the thirty years that these projects are expected to be in place of about three percent annually.
So if you, but we're going to pay for them for twenty years? Is that, is that right? If we go, if we go borrow three million dollars, we're going to pay for it for how long?
The financing mechanisms have, we haven't really gotten that far.
I was looking at, Don, typically it would be a twenty-year debt. At three million dollars, it might be less. We wouldn't park, have that out to twenty years. But as Jeremiah is about to talk about, we have not decided how we would fund these projects. Would it be debt or financing through the investor? So.
Okay. So the only reason I mention that is if, 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 if it's financed for ten years, twenty years, fifteen years, whatever the term is, that needs to be part of our calculation when we're looking at the cost too. I understand the, I understand the point oh five very clearly.
Sure.
But, you know, we need to have an actual cost.
Absolutely.
You know, when we're, when we're looking at.
Absolutely. And that's totally fair. And I'll, I'll actually address that a little bit later on. That three percent escalator, by the way, we felt was actually a fairly conservative estimate. Duke has actually increased utility rates six percent in 2018, and they're asking for another five percent in 2020. So that three percent is actually fairly low. So we feel pretty good about how those cost savings run out over time. That leads us to-
Jeremiah.
Yes.
Can you back up?
Yes.
What was it? Sixteen buildings?
Oh, sure.
Fourteen buildings.
Uh, fourteen total sites.
How long would it take to finish all fourteen of them?
Well, we've actually, and I actually will address that in our, at a later slide. But we're looking at multiple options for how we could potentially either finance this.
No, I mean install, say financing is there.
Correct.
Of having it finished.
Optimistically, I could say probably eighteen months if we were to be prepared to pay for it all at once.
Yeah.
But it really-
So that's eighteen months for fourteen building. And we've got eighty-something. How can we do it in ten, what, eleven years from now, every building?
I'm not sure I understand that question.
Does that make it, I, I might be misunderstanding. We're wanting to be by 2030, one hundred percent on eighty-four buildings, right?
Oh, no, sir. No, I don't think that the idea would be to necessarily have solar in every single building. It wouldn't necessarily make sense for every single building.
So one hundred percent, what, explain that then to me.
Sure. There would be a number of ways to offset our energy use that don't necessarily involve putting solar or renewable energy on a facility. What we would be looking at is additional options for how we purchase power. So for example, we right now, obviously, we just have Duke Energy and, and we don't have any other options. We're working with the utility company to potentially look at ways to buy third-party green energy through various means. So we would be able to offset some of our electricity, electricity use through power purchase agreements, through, through other mechanisms like that. So, yeah, I mean, if, if, if what you're asking is can we put solar on eighty-three buildings, the answer's probably not. For a variety of reasons. Some of them just aren't structurally sound. Some of them may need a new roof. Some of them frankly just have a lot of shade and don't make a lot of sense. And I'm not cutting down trees to put up solar a lot of times. That's not something I don't think our community necessarily wants. So there's a variety of ways that we'll try and reach that hundred percent goal that aren't strictly putting-
And how many buildings would we be looking at that you would need it to get to a hundred percent?
I don't think you could get to a hundred percent strictly by putting solar on county facilities.
Yes, okay. So you're looking at the land, we're looking at everything.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. It's got to be a variety of ways to get there. Putting solar on county buildings is a good step and it shows, I think, leadership in that space. But I don't, I don't think that you reach a hundred percent just by putting solar panels on buildings. So we'd have to look at things like, like the landfill's a great example of a utility scale-sized project that can help us reach our goal without putting solar on a building. So that makes sense.
But it's not in place yet either.
Uh, it's, it's due for construction in next year. It's, it's set to be, can start construction next year, quarter three of 2020.
Okay. Are you talking about buying carbon credits?
No, sir, not at this time. Okay. Let me make sure I'm in the right place. Okay. So this is just some of that return on investment we were talking about. So each of these is, I'm sorry, this is kind of a busy slide, but I wanted you to have all this information. It's one-year savings from each project and then lifetime savings from each project. The simple payback of those projects, just because I know that that's something folks want to see. And then that thirty-year levelized cost of energy that we discussed before. So total, you're looking at a one-year savings in the first year of about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars if all projects were implemented at once. And a four point seven million dollar cost savings over the lifespan of those projects.
So on some of it, if we're paying point oh nine now. So some of them that we're paying point oh nine now, we'd only be dropping it to point oh seven too. So it's not a big drop.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, some of these, the ones you're looking at specifically there at the bottom are canopy projects, which are significantly more expensive. And they do take significantly longer to pay for themselves because they're much higher-end projects.
Yeah. And I don't, I mean, I don't know that, you know, I'm not, I'm not against solar energy at all. But I travel a lot and I have seen some of the ugliest applications of solar energy in, on farmland and on, on buildings. I mean, and we have to be really careful with this because just because it's, it's a great, you know, renewable source, the application of it, you know, we, we just have to, we just have to be, we have to be careful.
Sure. Uh, this is essentially, my wonderful friends at Performance Management put this together for me. And I'm sorry that it's a little bit small and hard to read, but the, there's a list ranking on the, on the left-hand side here of just putting those projects in categories of sort of the lowest investment and the highest return versus the highest investment and the lowest return, sort of ranked. And again, you'll see that those canopy systems that are significantly more expensive do, do end up being at the bottom of that list. So this is just a, sort of a simple overview of it. Total cost without rebates of two point nine million, thirty-year utility savings of four point seven with a net savings of one point eight million. I also wanted to be remiss not to mention the fact that the cost savings is a part of this, but obviously we're doing this for other reasons. And some of the environmental impacts would be really positive for us. It would be approximately eleven hundred metric tons of CO2 that we'd be preventing. and that doesn't mean a lot to folks, so I put some of those equivalents up there that people like to see. Uh, it's equivalent to approximately one point two million pounds of coal being burned and that's every year for thirty years. So it's a significant carbon offset for us as well. So just a little bit more about the RFP itself. Uh, these requests would be for obviously construction on facilities and land. They would be turnkey solutions. We're trying our best to do as much of the upfront work as we can so that bidders will simply be able to look at the project and give us a price. Uh, so we're looking for turnkey solutions for cost of installation, operation and maintenance. Uh, the op, uh, as we spoke about earlier, the option to potentially award this in multiple phases depending on what those financing, financing mechanisms might be. Um, and in, obviously including the request for alternative, alternative construction plans. Um, if someone has a better idea they'd like to pitch us, we're certainly willing to listen. Uh, if they have additional options for things like energy storage that they'd like to pitch us, we certainly willing, willing to listen to that. Uh, and we're also very interested in requesting every option we can get in terms of the financing of this. What does it look like to own it? What does it look like to lease? Cause solar leasing is an option in North Carolina now. Uh, what does it look like for private financing versus installer financing? You know, we'd like all of those options on the table so that we can evaluate what makes the most sense for us. Uh, it will require a, a performance and payment bond. That's just a, a mechanism we use, uh, to ensure that bidders have the financial capacity to handle projects of this size. And the expectation that these would be, uh, thirty-year useful life of these installations. So the next steps for us, we've gotta do some, uh, additional site analysis on some of our partner sites. Uh, the school systems, Buncombe County Schools and, and Asheville City Schools have just recently, uh, confirmed their commitment to be a part of the RFP. So we've got some work to do in analyzing the sites available that they're going to tell us they'd like to look at. Uh, and then continue to develop the language of the RFP itself. We've got a draft in place, uh, that we're using some standard templates, but we're collaborating obviously with city and county purchasing departments to put that together. And then here's our very rough timeline. We'd like to come back to the board in November just to request permission to issue the RFP officially. Uh, we'd like to have all of our site analysis done for all of our partners by the end of the calendar year and be prepared to actually issue the RFP in January, uh, which would put us in March to potentially come back to the board to say, here's what we got from bidders, this is where we think we should go with this. Uh, and optimistically in spring, we could actually start construction and get some boots on the ground. Any questions? Got through it as quick as I could. All right, I'll sit over here just in case there are any questions. All right, uh, so this will be on the agenda for the November fifth meeting as well and we'll take it up there, all right? Uh, no questions at this time? All right, all right Jeremiah, Jeremiah, thank you so much. Um, we'll keep moving, I've now put my agenda somewhere else. So our next item is the Waste Pro update. Hey Dane, how are you?
Hey, how's everybody doing this evening?
Good.
Thank you. Good to see everybody, a lot of important information to go over, but to be conscious of time, we will keep good cadence. And, uh-
I like that.
Pull up the PowerPoint here. Of course, we're talking about the residential waste and recycling collections contract in the unincorporated areas of Buncombe County. And wanna provide an update on the contract and, and the status where we are now in the implementation of the new contract. And Chip Jingles is here with us today as a co-presenter to discuss some of the, uh, the rollout, um, uh, updates. So a little background, September tenth, uh, through the twelfth was the first communication point that existing subscribers received via postcard from Waste Pro and that indicated the deadline for cart selections. The county in that same timeframe published an article on County Central, County Center Facebook and Nextdoor. And as you are familiar, we received feedback during that timeframe from subscriber, uh, excuse me, subscribers and citizens. And we wanted to work, the last regular meeting that this board had, we, we had some good feedback. We had questions from this board, we had comments from the general public and we went to work to try to summarize and formalize some of the information that, that we received. And Waste Pro sent postcard notifications to approximately twenty-eight thousand subscribers. And the, the total estimated, and we put an asterisk with that, we don't have a formalized tracking system in place. This was Heather Blaylock, the saint that she is at our office, uh, helping us track that information. You know, understanding who the person was that was calling, their location, their address, understanding what, if it was a complaint or a concern, what that was regarding so that we could document that, document that and track that. And as well as the clerk's office in Lamar and, uh, and the folks there, thank y'all for, for helping with the questions and the, the feedback that you guys received and, uh, the Let's Talk calls. So total, that was approximately three hundred and forty on the call side, which is the left side, left side of your, of your left side table on this slide. And, uh, on the right side is the online contacts, which totaled, which were the Let's Talk, the web contact commissioners, how are we doing in Facebook medias, and that total fifty-four. So, so a total estimated around three hundred and ninety-four contacts, which represents approximately one point four percent of the individuals that actually received the, the initial communication via postcard. So working with Waste Pro and understanding how many subscribers have signed up, uh, with the cart selection process at this point and that number is at approximately twenty thousand, this is as of October tenth. And so that leaves about eight thousand customers that it, it's difficult to say that, you know, reading through the information where they, are they thinking, well, I'm gonna get defaulted to ninety-six gallon anyhow, so I don't need to take any further action? Or is there something else that's, that's causing them to, to pause? So Waste Pro, we've, we've talked through with them, they're gonna make, uh, make concentrated efforts to touch base specifically with the remaining eight thousand subscribers that they have not heard from. So that, that will help, uh, get an understanding of, of where these, these folks are and, and, and their thinking through with the carts. Uh, and other numbers that we asked for from Waste Pro, new subscrib, excuse me, new subscribers, uh, through this timeframe in September was, uh, the count was three hundred. Those are folks that were not previously subscribers, those are new sign-ons basically to the service. And the cancellation number was at two hundred and thirty-two, so.
So just a quick question for, uh, for Chip, does that eight thousand surprise you? Uh, that, that just hit the default button, my guess is it doesn't.
It's really a pretty good turnout.
Is it, that's about right. Yeah, twenty thousand people specifying the cart, to me, sounds like a pretty good number.
Yeah, we feel like that was, that was encouraging. Button. There we go. So breaking down some of the, the information that we gathered and understanding some of the basis of concern or complaints, we worked to, um, to create this spreadsheet based on the, the county concern analysis. And these are some of the counts that you saw earlier. Obviously, we did incorporate some double counts. We know for sure that some folks contacted Lamar's office, they contacted our office, they were, they were calling different, uh, different folks, different areas. But we, we kept that number there and a lot of folks were actually calling our office to say, I want the sixty-four gallon and the ninety-six gallon. So we did, we did get a lot of that as well, but we counted those. Um, with the, um, concerns by issue, the, uh, the price increase too expensive was the, uh, the top as far as frequency for what we, uh, heard feedback on from, from residents. And, um, as you can go down through the line there, uh, lack of information, misunderstanding information, unable to contact Waste Pro. And, and those are things as we do this overlay are the communication pieces that we heard feedback from the board. We heard feedback from the, the community, those are things we're talking about. A little bit later on in this, uh, discussion as far as ways that we're working with Waste Pro, our PR team, working together for, for effective communication and making sure that we're getting, um, getting next phase information out in a timely manner and making sure that those communications are clear. So talking about some of the concerns that we discussed that, that were identified, price concerns, we, we've talked, uh, in, in depth about the pricing. We, we fully understand that continuing the current contract would have resulted in a larger increase. Waste Pro's asked for two price increases in a ten-year period with the, the current, uh, contract. So that, that's certainly below the, uh, inflationary index, um, indexes. The, and, and obviously on the price side, the option that folks, uh, certainly have is to haul, self-haul their material to the transfer station or landfill. Now we get into the bear resistant cart option. There, I know, uh, members of the board, you've heard feedback on this, we have, Waste Pro has. So we heard that, we, you know, we, we touched base with Waste Pro, we've been working with Waste Pro, Chip and his group on, you know, identifying the, the concerns that we heard with the, uh, the bear resistant option. So as it is now in the contract, the current contract, uh, effective January first, the bear resistant cart is an, is, is a purchase period right now. That's the way it is now, it's three hundred dollars to purchase the bear resistant container. So working with Chip and his group on, uh, you know, what, what's, what an option is, this is where we come in with the or, big O R with an underline. Or we consider a leasing option that is nine, nine dollars fifty cents a month surcharge on top of the nineteen twenty-one. And that would remove the purchase option for folks. So it's purchase and then or lease option at nine fifty a month additional. But with the leasing option, we understand there are, there are a lot of folks that have purchased bear carts now. That's, that's their personal assets, they've invested in that. So with the lease program, if it's a, um, I forget the acronym, a certified bear, um, uh, bear resistant container, A C I G B?
I G B C.
A B C D E F G? I G B C, so that is, there, there is an association actually certified. It's cool, you need to go watch the video on that.
Of course there is.
These are very smart bears. So that, those are the qualifying containers that would be, um, qualifying for a applicable trade-in. So that trade-in program would effectively, for folks that have those containers, if they choose, again, it's their, their asset. If they choose to trade that in, it's a qualifying container, that would reduce their monthly payment to five seventy-five a month and that's for the, that's for the five-year base term, so. And I, and I do wanna point out, and, and Chip will discuss this in just a second, there are timeline and schedule impacts if, if we go this route. So I would like to bring Chip up and discuss some of the schedule impacts on this.
Good afternoon. As far as Dana was talking about with the scheduling impact, we feel that if we want to offer the lease option for the county residents, uh, then what we would need to do is send a notice out, uh, to all of the residents letting, letting them know that there has been this change and you do have this option. We would, uh, you know, we, we learned a lot as, throughout this process. So, you know, we've talked along with the staff here as to how we would, uh, roll that out. You know, not everybody at one time, but we would do it, uh, in phases, uh, so we could get the message out. Because there may be residents that, um, you know, felt that investing three or six hundred dollars in containers was too much, but that a lease option is more affordable. So, um, there are some advantages to a lease option, uh, you know, as opposed to just purchasing a container. If you purchase a container, that, that becomes yours, that becomes your container, you're responsible for it. Uh, if you lease a container from, from us, uh, then, you know, we maintain that container. So, you know, if the lid stops functioning properly or something of that nature, then we would either come out and repair it or swap it out. So to do that though, uh, you know, one big lesson that we learned is, you know, the county residents would need time to make an informed decision. Uh, so, you know, this would be, we, we estimate a three to four week, uh, delay, uh, in the process. Uh, so we'd have to prepare, let the residents know and give them time to offer feedback. And that's only if they're interested in the bear resistant container. So, you know, approximately now, it seems like a lot, but we really do not have many people that signed up for the bear resistant container. Um, I think it's fewer than one hundred, the last time I looked, actually signed up for it currently.
You're gonna have to send it to every one of them?
Yes.
Not the hundred, but twenty-eight thousand?
Yes. Yeah.
So question or suggestion, please only mention the bear cart. Don't mention-
Well-
-any of the previous information. Don't-
Right.
Don't provide any of the other costs associated with it because it's gonna confuse them to death.
Yes.
Just a bear cart, you want a bear cart, you know, keep it in the bear cart world.
Yes.
Cause you're sending twenty-eight thousand. We, you may get more than a hundred, but for right now, you know, a hundred people.
It's true. Right, well, you know, currently, you know, speaking with our staff, uh, we estimate that there are several thousand bear resistant containers out there.
Oh, okay.
That current residents have.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, it's impossible, we, we don't know that number, that's, that's what people have gone out and purchased themselves, so. Um, but, you know, that's only if you want to go with the lease option. So the, the, the two options here are, do you want to stay with the purchase program at three hundred dollars per container? Or do you want to do the lease program where residents can choose to lease it at a lower monthly payment? Pros and costs to each.
Chip, can you speak to how you might-
Phase in the communication?
Yes ma'am.
On that?
So what we're talking about phasing it in, you know, we, we'll probably break it up over five areas, maybe even by the day that we service. Uh, and, uh, we would do that every so many days, we would send a communication out to those residents. So because what we found out previously is that when we send a communication out, everyone from Buncombe County calls the next day or as soon as they get it. So we wanna space that out some, uh, so that we can handle that volume that comes in.
I just wanna make sure I'm completely understanding, so to clarify, someone could, under this plan, someone could say, yes, I do wanna buy one for three hundred dollars, or I wanna enter this leasing.
No.
Okay.
So currently the contract says, you know, we're gonna sell these containers, we're just, you can buy it for three hundred dollars. You can buy one, you can buy five, whatever you want, they're three hundred dollars apiece and they're yours. That's the current contract agreement. So the feedback that we got was these containers are too expensive, I've just invested three hundred, five hundred dollars. That, that was the feedback that we got. So the staff asked us to go back to the drawing board, what we came back with was a lease option. So that is correct. Mm-hmm, you have a lease option, it would give you a lower monthly payment and we would maintain the container. Well, that would be somewhat complicated, you know, it's a little, you know, it's easier to be more, you know, simple. Just, you know, either they're gonna own the containers or, um, or lease them. Uh, something we can consider and look at, but, uh, it, it is-
Um, people who don't have, you know, don't have the money saved up upfront.
Mm-hmm.
But it's substantially more expensive over five years if you don't already have one of these containers. So it's actually a worse deal for, for a lot of, well, for most, well, for everyone actually. In terms of the total amount of money they're gonna spend, it's a, it's, it's a, it's like almost six hundred dollars over five years.
It depends on, on, um, you know.
I mean, they don't have to, they don't have to come up with it upfront, but it is, there's no way around the fact that it's, it's, it's way more money if you are not turning in a can.
So there are things to consider with that, like I said, so with the lease option, we maintain the container. So that latch stops working, we come out and fix it. The wheel falls off, we come out and fix it. You buy the container, your wheel comes off, we, we're not responsible to come back out and fix it.
Could you, could you consider providing both options? I just, why is this so complicated? I mean, you just, you know, it's either this or this, you know, lots of companies like, we have this piece of equipment. You wanna buy it, you wanna lease it and people, you know, people choose the option that, that makes the most sense for, for them. So what, I don't understand what's so logistically complicated about having the two options.
That's something we could consider.
Okay. Okay.
Is it, what, what would it take to get to a yes on that? It feels like the more, as we, we've had some great conversations as we keep hearing from folks and thought a lot about those times when I've been on hold with an airline or a health insurance company and you understand how, um, and also hear how hard y'all are working. But it just seems like, and I wanna cite a bit to a conversation with Commissioner Presley, that if we can increase options for people, their sense of control and choice and provide excellent customer- and provide excellent customer care, where if someone calls in and they have an issue, they have some tracking number, so they don't have to call fifteen different places to find out what's going on with their issue. That we could, we could take a big step forward in helping to resolve whatever the cohort of people who are actually kind of really having issues with this are. So I would love to see us get to a yes on, you can purchase or lease. And also, let's, what we can really do to make sure we're providing the extra level of customer care, even if it's coming from the county side, maybe so during this period as we, as we roll this out.
I'm okay with you going and coming back and letting us know. I mean, it's very, I mean, anytime you lease anything, it's gonna cost more. It, it, I mean, it's just, it's the way it is. Some people choose a lease, you know, I, I would never lease a car, you know, it's just, I'm not gonna do it, you know, the, they make, they, they make money. You know, it gives you the opportunity to be able to decide, you know, how many you gotta have in stock, you know, it's, it's easier on the company, I get that, you know. But some people would rather own, but some people might rather, might rather, might rather own.
And I'm not saying that, I think the company should make some money on it if they lease it, cause yeah, you're investing your capital upfront and maintaining it. I think that's totally valid, I just, I think for folks who have the money upfront to spend, I think a lot of them would rather just probably just write the check and, you know, and not have to pay for it.
You know, there, there is an assumed risk either way. You know, I mean, you know, like I said, if you could purchase that cart, you may not have a minute's trouble out of it, you're good. You could purchase that cart, I don't know, gets hit by a car because you rolled it out or bear attacks it or whatever, and you gotta replace the wheels on it the next month. I mean, there's an assumed risk. The same thing for us too, you know, and that's why we have to have something to maintain it, because we have to make, you know, the trip out there to fix it and that sort of thing, have parts available. And, you know, we, we also have to have staff on hand to repair it as well. So, you know, that's, that's why i- i- it does become difficult when we make assumptions as to how many people we think will do it or not do it. We're thinking about on our end too, our ability to service the customer. So, that, that's why we have that offering.
One thing there, you're, I, I, I would like to have the option to buy or lease, and get back a future date on that. But you said two thousand people out of these eight thousand already have bear proof containers?
Well, you know, we don't know the exact number, but after getting some feedback from our drivers, we actually think of several thousand, somewhere approximately around three thousand customers now have a bear resistant container of some sort. Whether that's a chain wrapped around it or whatever, that they have some sort of bear resistant container. So, that's out of the whole twenty-eight thousand, that with what we service now, we feel that there's maybe approximately three thousand customers that currently have some sort of bear resistant container.
Okay. So you have no number on how many of them are almost twins to what you've got on the bear proof, right?
Yes, no.
Or does, would the public have access to them, or is this a one made for Waste Pro, Republic, different people, or? And I, I guess where I'm going with this is, if these things are so close, and, and I know weight that the one-armed bandit's gotta pick them up, and, you know, it's gotta open at the right time, but if they're that close, I, I would like to see if there's any way you could put a decal on them, or, you know, them have them painted or something to save these people three hundred dollars or nine seventy-five, or?
Yeah.
I mean, instead of, yes, so, if they turn them in, yes, they are getting credit, but there again, bear proof, what you just said, are you gonna give Commissioner Frye five seventy-five credit on the one he's got this chain wrapped around this bear proof, you know, with the bottom out of it?
Yeah, that's a great point. So, every container will not be approved, you know, we need to, we need to, to inspect it and make sure that it meets some basic criteria. It's clean, it's usable, it functions, it's approved by the I G B C. Now, in regards to, to why we do that, we look at our program overall as a, overall, okay? So, right now, one tremendous problem that we experience in the county is people that don't pay for service, okay? And so by buying a container or leasing a container, it enables us to have that information. So, we have the serial number on the one that was purchased, we know that that resident has one that was purchased, and we'll have a special list where we'll make sure every month that they receive, that we receive payment, okay? Or if you're at a lease, leasing that container, if you don't pay, we'll just pick the can up, okay? So right now, you know, what those numbers, Dane showed some numbers, two hundred and some people counseled service. Well, on top of that, two hundred and some people that counseled last month, there were a hundred and eighty-some customers that just didn't pay. And what happens typically is they, these customers don't pay, happens every month, but they sit their trash out, and we come by and pick it up. And that's why when we look at the program as a whole, we want to have a container, we want to know what residence that goes with, so we can make sure that we're, we're actually getting paid for our service.
I, I guess, let me make it more simple, maybe I didn't, if there's only thirty-five people that's got this compatible bear proof container already, that is exactly like you, could you charge a registration fee, you know, someone come out there and change the lid on it if it's exactly the same thing? And, you know, make it identifiable, and there's twenty-five people happy, you know, it's like me and Jasmine's been talking most afternoon. Working on a little bit of this at a time, that could solve some problems right there.
Yes sir. That's something we could go back and look at.
If it is, you know, compatible and everything.
Well, I, I don't think that there will be any containers out there that are compatible for automated trucks.
Okay, then.
I don't think there are any of that. You know, you, when we say what we're looking at, those that are approved by the I G B C, there are some that are equipped for automation and some that are not. I doubt any of the ones that are out there are equipped for automation. So.
I mean, to me, the trade-in option, I don't have bear cart, don't want a bear cart, don't want no bears. But, to me, you do the math on the trade-in, I mean, to me, the trade-ins are, I mean, you're gonna, if you pay three hundred dollars for a bear cart, you're gonna get three hundred dollars, you're gonna get three hundred dollars back. You're gonna pay three hundred dollars for five years-ish, cause it's five seventy-five, which is about sixty-two dollars, sixty-three dollars a year. Three hundred and fifteen dollars. So, the trade-in's not a bad deal, I mean, just glancing, so. But you know, we could, we could absolutely talk this contract for months. And I, I appreciate that what you've come back with, it may not be what everybody likes, but it's, it's, but you did come back with something. You didn't have to come back with anything on a bear cart.
I'm gonna give you a good option.
Didn't have to come back with nothing.
It's interesting, here in the county, there, there are two, the, the two biggest things, there's a bag or a bear cart. Big extremes, you know, for those two, so.
I mean, I, I, I like carrying my bag out, you know, I don't have a problem, but, but I'm excited about getting a cart too.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions or comments from?
We, we've still got quite a few, we were hoping to get some resolution on the bear cart today.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get everything on our agenda this afternoon.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's keep moving and let's be focused. Go ahead, Dane.
All right. So, concerns about cart, about cart weight, we've talked about this in the past, we've heard that concern by providing the different size options, we felt like that helped with folks with mobility, as well as the folks that don't generate a whole lot, they have, you know, an easier option at forty-eight gallon, roughly the half the industrials, or the ninety-six gallon size. The carts are rollable, as far as on multiple surfaces. So, site assessments are happening now, those are happening, and they will be, they will be continuing through November for individual assessments. So we're gonna fast forward a little bit due to time. So, so under consideration right now, and this is a program that we're discussing at this point, so currently our solid waste department offers a rebate program for haulers that bring to our facilities over twelve thousand tons per year. And with the new contract starting January first, Waste Pro would not be eligible for that because the ton is generated in this residential contract, it's coming to our facilities anyhow, so that was excluded. So we're talking about, or talking through with Waste Pro regarding the, the senior citizens with low income and lo- long driveways, and working to, working on developing a program with Waste Pro that could help discount the twenty-five dollar premium service for the backdoor service for qualifying subscribers. And eligibility would be based on income, age, and long driveways. The, the program would be first come, first served, and funds would be limited to the total amount of rebates given to Waste Pro. So obviously we've got the four dollars, historically, the Waste Pro is qualified for that, but starting January first, they would not. So we, we, we have that, that, that point that we're negotiating. Waste Pro is currently working through the, the cost and the number of subscribers that that program could serve. So we're, we're talking through those points right now.
Well, that is awesome. I'm not sure they've been talking about this, no offense to the bear carts, you know, but, but bear carts are really important to people that need a bear cart. So this is really great.
Yes, so we are working through, these are now working with Waste Pro, and those are, those things we'll, we'll have further discussion on.
So those were the two big changes, I believe, Dane?
Yes ma'am.
That we heard from the last meeting?
Hats off, y'all didn't have to do that.
The one consensus, I mean, I'm asking for a vote tonight, but consensus, and I heard from you guys, you would want us to have both bear cart options in the contract, where you can buy or where you can lease. We've asked that of Chip, and he's gonna go back. I know when we asked as a staff, he was, they needed to have one or the other. So, if Chip is willing to go back and take a look at that with his leadership team, and then give us an answer, but we really need those answers and those consensus so we can order and get the contract and the time order so we can move forward. So, what are the big questions that you need tonight answered? The bear carts, anything else? That's it?
It's, yeah, it's mission critical.
Yeah, the, the bear cart is mission critical, as Dane just stated, because we have to, we need to develop a plan to contact every resident, give them time to make a, an informed decision, and then we're gonna make, make some changes on our end too. Just like some enhancements to our website, make sure that the residents can have a confirmation and things of that nature. So, you know, and I know that you, you are correct, my original answer was no. I, I have been thinking about that and toying with different ideas of how we would do that if we were to do both. It's not, not easy, cause it, it, it just affects a lot of other things. But I guess i- if we could agree to do both, could we make a decision now to say, hey, we're gonna do both and go ahead and proceed because, you know, it's gonna take some time to do this and do it right and get the message out?
So if the commission agrees, then we would have to amend the contract, we'll bring that back for a vote, but this would give us a couple of weeks that we can move forward with notifying the residents if you would say yes to both tonight.
To the, to the bear cart lease or purchase option as described?
It would give you the option to do both, either you could purchase, or you could lease the container.
And what we'd be agreeing is to put that on the agenda and vote on that at the next meeting, right? That's what you're asking for?
Yes, we would vote on that, and once, once we work the details out, we would also bring this rebate program back as well.
Well, that one there, I'd like to see everything, cause I, I mean, I don't think we can keep, in fairness to the public, in fairness to, not us, but in fairness to the public, in fairness to you, and in fairness to staff, you know, we need closure on it. And, you know, I would like to see all this in there, and let's just do it.
Yes, and we will bring this back on the November fifth with a contract amendment and all the details that the public can hear, we just need some guidance to move forward tonight.
I think we're all eager to.
I want to look at this a little deeper. I want to look at this part a little deeper.
Which, which part?
Yes, this, the part with elderly.
Oh yes, absolutely.
It all needs to be there, we didn't even talk to that.
So yeah, I, I think we all agree on that, and we, you know, we, we need to spell out the details on that section, but I guess the part that we're looking for, can we move forward with is just the bear cart, not the other part, just the bear cart. Because what we need to do, our staff will have to get to working with the, the county staff, we have to notify everyone, we have to give them time, there need to be changes to the website, so.
Can you, can you back the slide up to the bear cart? There, okay, so, I'm, take a shot at it, okay?
We're not, we're not doing it tonight.
Can't do it?
We can't do it tonight. We're just giving her, giving them direction to put it on the agenda for action at the next meeting.
Yeah, essentially, we, we would be willing to move forward in good faith.
Yeah.
Understanding that you'll vote on it the next meeting.
But you're doing this and the option.
We will develop that option more about the rebates, then bring that to you. We really need guidance on the bear cart that we can move forward ordering and getting the word out to the citizens to get that done.
So, so we can't, we can't vote on this right now, cause this is just a pre-meeting, but I think what we're, well, I think what we're asking, this, on the bear cart item, does anybody have any concerns about that moving forward? If so, it'd be good to hear them now, okay? All right. So on this item, I'm not hearing any concerns. So although we cannot formally vote, I think, I think you got a sense that people are pretty pleased with that, that piece.
Yes.
All right. Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you gentlemen, all right. All right, so let's check in on where we're at. We have two items, one on the nonprofit funding guidelines, we're just not gonna have time to cover that in this session. We can probably knock out the easement item. Why don't, why don't we go ahead and just do that, and then we'll kind of decide what to do on the, the remaining item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, just very briefly on the Lee Walker Heights easement, this is a temporary easement to facilitate, a temporary easement to Maple Crest LLC. So just want to make sure that the board understands why Maple Crest LLC is involved. This is just a temporary easement along the eastern boundary of the Lee Walker Heights subdivision, there's a strip of line, a strip of property between the backside of the Mini Jones property, thirty-five feet to ten feet in width along the entire line. They want to redo a road, I think it's called Waddell or Mardell, but it's temporary because they don't know if they have to end up doing any slopes or whatnot. It's called Maple Crest because it's a combination of Housing Authority of the City of Asheville and Mountain Housing Opportunities. So the Housing Authority created a Maple Crest Authority, Mountain Housing made a mountain, a Maple Crest entity for management. So for operating, management, and construction purposes, they created these new entities to own it. So just want to make sure you understand that this is a subsidiary of Mountain Housing which has a seventy-five year lease on the property to own it and operate it. So this is just a construction easement as part of that project, temporary in nature to come back in a couple of years or when construction's done to finalize that easement. And we hope to have this on for, I believe, consent on November fifth.
Okay. Yes sir. Sounds good, thanks. All right, so the last item that we don't have time to handle at this meeting is the nonprofit funding guidelines.
Did you want us to just bring that to regular agenda next time versus hearing about it today?
Were you going to put it on the agenda for the next?
Yes. And it's rather time sensitive, cause it defines when we can release the nonprofit grants.
Well, you know, I mean, one option would be, if people are available, we could move this to have an informational discussion at our regular meeting tonight, so we could talk about it a few minutes, and then vote on it at the next meeting. So, you know, the agenda's not super short, but it's not super long, so we could.
We do have a public hearing that will be discussed later, that will be coming off, so you are.
That will come off?
Yes.
Why don't we put this on the agenda for the regular meeting and just have an informational discussion, no action, but we'll just put it under new business? All right. Sounds good, all right. We've covered everything, any other items commissioners want to discuss in the short amount of time we have left? Okay. All right, we're gonna adjourn our pre-meeting, and we will start our regular meeting at five o'clock. We are gonna have a, I think, a very brief closed session at the beginning of that meeting.
We just need to add it to your agenda.
We do need to add it to, so we need to add it to the agenda.
We need to open your regular meeting, add it to the agenda, and then there's another item that will come off the agenda and add on.
So why do we need to, I'm just, just from a process standpoint, why do we need to add it to the agenda? Cause usually when we've, usually these are at the end of the meeting, and we just have a motion to go.
Well, you need to move it, I guess, then if you're saying, have it at the end.
If you have it at the end on the agenda, you just need to move it to the beginning. But you have to open the, you have to open the regular meeting to make.